Here.
For Jura.
Here.
Turn off my hearing aid. Are there any additions to the agenda?
There is one addition board, you should have that attached to your agenda there. We did receive last Thursday an email from our nurse at Eisenhower. I stated that she's not able to return this school year. Actually, it's, you were just discussing that, so we know about childcare because the childcare situation, she has set up with her new family. It's not gonna happen, so she can't return full time. So, um, at this point, so that's, that's where that is, what that's, we add that to consent agenda. Uh, which will then, uh, become part of consent agenda.
To A or?
To A, yes. Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, is there any audience participation communication?
Announcements, a lot is coming up, quite a bit. Summer school starts Monday. It's Monday through Thursday, eight thirty to one, eight thirty to eleven thirty, sorry, should I say. Um, this year, we're close to about eighty or so students at least that are participating, which is good, so, better than the last year's, so. Really try to get parents to register and do that too, which is really good. New teacher orientation days, Monday, August fourth through Wednesday, August sixth. Wednesday is an optional day, we're just keeping, keeping slotted because Monday is a full day. And actually, the luncheon, we're gonna have to do this year on Monday, August fourth. So, I will share that information with the board too, so if you are able to. We're gonna start at twelve o'clock on the luncheon on August fourth, it'll be here at Lace, you're welcome to join us if you'd like to, to meet the new staff. We'll have the mentors there as well, um, you know, have all that too, so it's gonna be a busy day and a half. The first day is here at the district, um, and then the second day, the morning here back at the district, and then the afternoon, they actually have a session with the ROE. It's called Legal Light, where they do that. And then, we're not sure if we need Wednesday morning, uh, right now, we're just gonna kind of see, because there may be, uh, just some additional conversations to have, but it depends. We're gonna finalize actually those conversations. We have our administrator meeting, uh, next, next week, as a call or retreat to kind of, you know, just kind of tweak everything and go from there too, so. And then, uh, first day of school for staff, or first day for staff on the August eighteenth. Phew, that is very close. And then, first day for students, August twentieth, and then remember, that's for grades one through eight. Kindergarten and preschool, they start the twenty-first, because on the twentieth, that first day, they did a meet and greet the parents for kindergarten, preschool, they do that with that, with the first day there.
Okay. Um, there were no FOIA's? Perfect. So, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items for A one through four F five?
So moved.
Oh, go ahead. Allison.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, the, uh, closed meeting notes for approval. We just had the regular VOE meeting minutes.
Are they not in there?
Maybe just.
I'm sorry. Were they not in there?
No.
Oh.
Just the regular minute meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes.
They were not attached?
You have to go pop one, I think.
At least that I could find.
I did not see that they were not attached. Well, then, we're gonna have to, yeah, we have to approve those the next meeting.
Yeah.
I apologize, I did not see that they weren't attached, I thought those were attached to the regular, so, thank you, Ms. Wijira, for that. Um, then, obviously, we'll have to take off the approval for the closed meeting minutes and move that to then the August meeting.
Okay, so, those will be approved in August. Okay. Any further discussion?
In terms of the, um, the letter from Ms. Guzman, is there discussion about part-time for her, or is that not a possibility?
If it's a possibility, we'd prefer full-time right now, so we can sue that, so, um, and as I shared with her, we're, so we're gonna post it as a full-time position, but, you know, if there is a situation which we can utilize her part-time, then yes. But we prefer full-time for that position, so, we're gonna seek that out, but if there is a possibility either there or somewhere else to be part-time, then we'll, you know, work to have discussions with her on that.
I'm sure it's not easy to find nurses, so.
It's not.
Having that option might be.
Exactly, exactly, so, but I think we're gonna try and see from there too, so, 'cause it's also hard when you only have a few days, and then, I don't know the schedule, she's not sure of her schedule yet, so if it's this, so that's, so we're, we're gonna try for full-time first, and then if, but, you know, if it's, if it can, if we can do something, I said, then, you know, we'll reach out and see if it's a possibility.
Is she looking to go somewhere else, like, part-time, like, is?
That I don't know.
Okay. Okay.
All right, Renal.
Aye, sorry, I, I just really having hard to, hard on hearing you.
Pavlu.
Aye.
Ramos.
Aye.
Severn.
Aye.
For Jura.
Aye.
Buckles.
Aye.
Okay. Um, discussion items superintendent report.
Any questions on our enrollment? Okay, I'll go for there. So, just a quick update on legislation, federal grant status, as you know, it's been very interesting what's been happening at the federal level. Um, as I shared with the board, we got an update on our federal grant status. The federal government is delaying the Title III, Title II, and Title IV distribution of monies. What does that mean for us? Title II monies are monies that we usually get that go for professional development for our, for our staff and for our district. Title III monies are for servicing our English language learners. And then, our Title IV, it's called Safe and Sound Schools, and it's, every, we, every year, we get about ten thousand dollars for that, which we've utilized towards STEM education and other aspects of, you know, maybe some safety technology for the, for the schools as well through the years. So, right now, don't know if we're gonna get that. You know, when we're looking at everything together, uh, there's, you know, the, um, pause, let me pull this up really quick here. The monies that we're gonna get, it's not all of our Title I's, because Title I is still coming through, as far as we know, right now, as well as our IDEA grant monies, which is for special education, and the preschool follow-through through as well for IDEA, those are still, have been approved, there's been no delays that I have heard of for those. But it's these other three grants that, um, you know, that have been unfortunately delayed. So, with that in all, when you're looking at those three grants, it comes out to be approximately about fifty-five thousand dollars or so of money that the district right now is not going to receive. And of those, with those monies, the district utilizes those monies typically from Title II. We provide a lot of professional development for our staff, so we provide monies for them to go to conferences each year. For countywide day, when we have that incident day in the spring, they can attend different sessions outside of the district. Um, as you remember too, part of our teacher contract is that every other year, teachers are allotted two hundred dollars to attend a conference, and the sub-costs too, so we cover the sub-costs with that as well, so, there's a lot that goes into that. And then, we also have used those monies to offer some specialized trainings, like if schools needed, like, if they wanted to have, like, this past year with, um, like with Lace, when we're talking about the U Fly. You know, kind of see, can we provide those trainings as well too, so we've utilized that quite a bit. So, you know, but of those, even though we're not gonna have the money, the district still want, still needs to and wants to provide those opportunities for the staff as well too, so we're still gonna provide that. Um, especially with all of our professional development, which is still about, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars or so. When you're looking at our Title III grant monies, those monies have gone to, uh, resources and supplies for our students in, you know, with the programs for our teachers. Um, registration costs for the EL teachers to attend the state conference, um, an elevation assessment subscription, which, uh, this, the teacher used the last few years that helps them align how the students are doing with the, um, with their language acquisition skills and the WEITA standards, and helps them regenerate reports. And then, BPEC meeting and supplies as well, BPEC is the Bilingual Parent Advisory Committee that's part of the Title III grants. Well, if there's no Title III grants, then technically, there's no BPEC. So, in looking at a priority for that, we'd like to provide some of these, but they're probably not the highest priorities, so we'll look to see. So, like, for instance, resources and supplies, if they, if the teachers need something, we're provided, but the, over the past few years, we've purchased some programs, which are a number of programs for the, um, the teachers and for the schools for that. So, they're pretty solid with that, but they're still gonna need some consumables, they're still gonna need some of these, so we're, you know, we're always gonna provide that. As far as the ELL conference goes, we may not be able to send every teacher, because they've gone every year, and so, right now, we're going to really fi, you know, kind of really fine-tune and go by the professional development cycle. So, if that teacher's on cycle, then we'll provide for that, but not all teachers are on cycle to attend a professional development, so we may not be able to send that to kind of with that pieces there. Um, the elevation assessment subscription, it's pretty expensive, we'd like to take a look at that, I'm actually working with, I'm, I'm going to be working with the team to see if our current, we have Otis as well, and to set up a meeting with them to see, can that, in the meantime, meet our needs for that program, or do we really need that, to kind of from there too. Um, so, we're trying to kind of prioritize and see, do we need to spend, do we need to provide this, or, you know, do we, can we hold off on some of these until we actually get the grant monies? For Title IV, uh, some of these, you know, is part of just what we do, so for instance, STEM classroom supplies for Lace and Delay, we typically give about a thousand and fifty, a hundred dollars a year for that, and with a new teacher, and we just started the K through two part, you know, portion of program last year. We're gonna continue to support that, that great program through two, so we wanna, you know, maintain that, and so that's gonna be continued. ALICE trainings and licensing, the majority of this training took place last year for administrators, they were all certified ALICE trainers, we don't need that necessarily training anymore with that. Um, so, that part, we're not really going to, to do, if we can, if we get monies, then great, but right now, that's a lower priority. However, we also did last year use the pay a partial salary for technology and library aid at Eisenhower, uh, that's just to kind of offset some of the costs, but we're maintaining that position with that too. So, that's just a cost that we're gonna continue on with that. I just wanted to go over this, because even though we're not going to be receiving these fundings, um, we're looking to maintain them through our local funds, a lot of this, so, you look at everything of that total money, about thirty-one thousand dollars still we're looking to maintain with local funds for professional development, with the STEM classroom supplies, with the partial salary for, you know, with the salary for the, uh, technology and library aid, and then we'll look to see about Level Two priorities, to see, do we need that, and if we do, great. Or, are there other opportunities within our Title Grants, you know, Title I money, or me by IDEA funds, that we can use to kind of offset that as well, and still implement some of those, you know, aspects that we're losing funding for?
Um, I have a question about the BPEC meetings, are those usually well pretend, uh, well attended by our?
They, the parents come, yes, but the hard part is with that, is that we don't necessarily get parents who wanna be part of the BPEC, you know, you know, actual like committee, so we ask them, but yes, they, they do attend those. We have a pretty good, we have a pretty good show-up for that.
'Cause I think, I mean, something like that with meeting supplies and resources, maybe that's something we can reach out to the PTA about, because, um, I think BPEC meetings are usually a great way for those parents to get involved with the district, and especially if the, you know, these are parents of English language learners, they might be English language learners themselves, I think it would be a really, I would really like to see us like try to, try to encourage, keep doing that, because it, I think it's good for those families. And to be able to meet with other parents who are in a similar situation.
Just to clarify, naturally, when you said, these are delayed as of right now, so we haven't gotten a no. Or I feel like it's more than likely going to result in a no.
I, what I have heard is that these grants, they're delayed because they wanna review the process, the approval process, and the content of the programs. And so, with that process, they may recommend some cuts to them, that's what I was hearing for these programs, so, it is not a no, but it's also not a solid yes, it's still a who the heck knows type of thing, so. It's just, which is, you know, and, you know, with that, I think the next big session for this to have, I think, I was here in like September, maybe, something like that too, so, it's a long time, we can't wait on some of these things. So, some things we're going to do, that's a very, you know, good point too, and, and like I said, this is just right now, and as we talk through this, you know, we're gonna kind of see, like, what, you know, do we still wanna have those meetings and everything as well too, exactly.
And these are direct federal, these are not passed through, through the state?
Well, all the federal go through the state.
They are passed through.
Yes, they're all passed through the states, yes, and the state does their fun magic with the federal grants, you know? And so, this is the typical allocations that we get, you know, for, um, for these grants, and so that's where this is based on. Each year kind of fluctuates a little bit here and there, but this is typically what we've been receiving about the past like three years, about average with that too. So, it's just unfortunate, you know, it's not fun, um, you know, but it's, but as you can see, we're gonna, you know, you're gonna see also too, some of these costs reflected in our budget presentation, because we're taking that on, because we're receiving less funding, but we still need to maintain, you know, some of these aspects too. So, that's what I wanted to just share with everybody with that. Sorry to be Debbie Downer with that.
Okay. Um, committees, finance committee, you know, Frank.
Frank, sorry, but any questions on the lunch program history? And I know that there was a question about the kids' club, um, but I was not able to get that information, so once I do, I'll get, I'll provide an information, so, okay?
Thank you.
'Cause Frank's out of town, and Mary Anderson is on summer vacation, so just kind of try to get that together.
There was such a discrepancy, I was curious as to why that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't know if it's just a matter of just the reporting or when it came in, uh, but I just wanna make sure I have the right answer for it, and I was able to get that in time, so.
I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Facilities?
Okay, several project status, so Mark Delay Playground, um, as you look at, we, the walkway and the sidewalk, as you remember, we talked about last time, we were making that, um, wheelchair accessible. And so, they're adding the ramp for that to the entrance, and then a small cement path leading up to the playground as well, so that's being done with the sidewalk. Uh, the construction updates, well, parking lot repair, I'll start Lace first, that was done where you parked, I don't know if you saw the big darker asphalt strip that was there from like that sewer cap all the way back to the, um, uh, the dumpsters there, that section was repaired. So, uh, many of us were not here for our original parking lot repair, which is done at Lace, I think it's now three years ago. But when that repair was done, they did look at that area and said, hey, you may want to take a look at this area, we think you need to dig deeper, but we're gonna charge about at least a hundred thousand dollars for that. And it's like, whoa, wait a minute, what's going on here, but we don't know how much it's gonna be, it could be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're like, whoa, let's, okay, it wasn't like urgent, they said, but it's something to look into, we're like, we're not going to go down that, let's see how that goes. Well, it did allocate a little bit, you saw some of the stuff try to flake up, because that's where the garbage trucks come in, and they back up, and so, even though we have the cement pad there, it was adding extra pressure, so that's where you got that. So, we did actually, this time, they did actually go down, I believe, an extra foot and added even more depth and thicker layer of asphalt. And so, instead of being a hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it was about thirty thousand dollars for that, but it was something we did need to do, so we did do that. So, it's, you know, unfortunate with that, but, you know, hindsight twenty, we could've done something, but at the same time, it's at least a third of the cost that we did it now to repair that as, the asphalt there in that section with that, so that was taken care of there. Um, and then, the construction updates, I actually just talked to Cory today. Like we got here, so, they're doing a lot of work, and as I walked in there, I just found, I talked to Cory, so it's from Studio G C, and I said, I'm a little worried, like, what's happening here? Because if you remember, we had some, a little bit of delay with some asbestos findings, but now it's all cleared up, and they're working. He said, don't, he goes, I know it kind of looks bad, but I guarantee you, they're working, they're actually be coming in over the weekends now and working overtime to get this done too, so I walked in there today, actually took a look, and actually, there's about three classrooms that have the walls up for the bathrooms, actually look really, really good. It doesn't take up as much space as you would think, I thought it would in the ba, in the classrooms, they actually look really good. All the plumbing is actually done, now it's a matter of putting, building the walls and doing the, um, the, uh, fixtures and all that, and the, you know, finishing. So, it's, it's gonna get there, and I actually asked, uh, Studio G C to provide us with an updates and a reports, next Tuesday, they're gonna give that to us, so, when I have that, I'll share that with the board as well too, because, you know, I wanna make sure we have to, we gotta get this going here, so, uh, to make sure, so just, you know, it's, any construction project always has its hangups, but we have schools starting, and so they need to get over these little hangups and get going on this stuff too, so, we're getting there. I'll have a further report for the board on Tuesday, 'cause I asked them for that, because I need some more follow-up to make sure this is on track and gonna be done. He said it is, but I still wanna have a report so I can share with you too.
So, that's the frame for the door, right? So then, is that line, that white line, is that where the wall is?
Whoa, sorry, that was really crazy with that zoom. Um, let me see here.
There's like that white chalk?
Um, no, you, no, the wall is actually, it's gonna be, this is, this, this part right here, this is actually the, the frame as well for the wall. Then cinder blocks are placed to create the, the outs, the wall as well too, so that's what that is, they had to put this in there for the door frame. Then they're adding cinder blocks to go, I think the cinder blocks do come out to here, but the, it kind of comes out to here, and then squares in.
Right, okay.
Yes, because they also have to widen it, so it is gonna be pretty wide, so yes, so about here.
So that will be like the wall?
About there, yeah. And I was worried, like, oh man, that's a big bathroom, but it actually, it's, it actually looks really good, and it does not take up as much space as I thought it would, so it's, it's, they're pretty nice, the ones that have been completed there too. And the office is completely gutted right now, and they have, because that nurse's bathroom, remember, they're redoing, and actually, they had to take up a little more space, but that's not bad either, actually, it looks worse than it is, but it's actually gonna create like a nice little hallway now for there too, so it's, we all thought, oh my god, it's gonna be no space, but actually, how it's working out is actually looking really good, it's just a matter of getting her done. So, we're chums, you know, gonna be sitting on Studio G C now the next, you know, few weeks here to kind of make sure that this is on track, so.
Policy committee?
All right. Discussion wise, 'cause we have an approval for the first reading down below, which we can discuss next season there.
Education Foundation?
Yes, there was one grant, um, that was recent, so we already talked about Great Starts, and, and who was approved, 'cause I missed last meeting, so I apologize. Um, a grant had, back in June, the last grant of the year was approved to the, um, uh, for enhancing literacy through decodable text. Um, so, which teachers were these?
It was intervention, reading intervention teachers, wasn't it?
Reading intervention, thank you, yes, they were approved, and will be, um, doing a formal presentation, um, of their enhancing literacy through decodable texts, um, the end of next year for us. So, I, the next meeting is August thirteenth, so, I'll have more then, after that, 'cause then they'll be selling tickets.
Oh, yeah, selling tickets, and then they'll also then present the check to the winning teachers at the first day on the eighteenth.
At the first day, yeah, they're gonna do that at, um, what does it say here? Yeah. And at Teachers Institute Day, the beginning of the school year, yeah.
And if any board members want to attend the first institute day, just let me know, you're welcome to attend.
Um, is there any unfinished business?
Yeah, actually, you know, I, I don't wanna take this opportunity, board, I know we talked a little bit, but I guess there was some questions that was asked, um, by some, not board members, but some other members of the community about the district's participation in the, um, community free lunch program. And, so I just wanted to take an opportunity just to address that and let the board know, uh, is that, you know, the district has been considering that program, over the last few years, we've looked into that quite a bit. Um, and how that program works is that if a district reaches a certain threshold of students, a percentage threshold, should I say, of students who qualify for free dish lunch status, then the district has the option to go into a community-based free lunch program, which means that any student, whether they qualify or not, can get a, will get a lunch for free. Um, and so, we've talked with the state a few times, and that threshold is sixty percent as a district, you know, across the board, sixty percent of students who qualify for this lunch. As a district, we have never gone over forty percent, right now, we're hovering around thirty-eight point seven percent, somewhere in there, we've never done that before. Um, actually, this spring, uh, Mr. Brenninger, Mrs. Lilly, who is our, you know, food service director, and myself, we actually did meet with the state, the state was about this, 'cause they came to us probably in late March, April, I wanna say, I can't remember when it was, but, and they said, hey, have you guys considered this? Like, well, no, because we're not at the sixty percent threshold, she goes, well, yeah, you are, we're like, what do you mean, we are? Well, the state had a reporting error that listed our district at like seventy-five percent of students, you know, qualify, which is not the case. And so, we talked with the gentleman about it, we discussed, he's like, well, what do you mean, you're not, I said, well, look at our, look at our SIS, look at all of our data you have right here on the state, there's something wrong with your, with your, with your reporting, because we are thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent, he goes, oh, I didn't realize that, so. So that, so that's where that error came in, and looking at the report where there's a question from the, from the federal website, that data was pulled around February, March month states, well, that's when that error was in there, and the state hasn't corrected it until after that. So, there was a misunderstanding, 'cause the state had an error, I just wanna let the board know, is we monitor this, and if it makes sense, then, if it's, we get about sixty percent, 'cause that's when it makes monetary sense, 'cause if you go, if you're part of the program, when you're below sixty percent, y- it's just, you're gonna lose money, like, you know, even more so in the deficit than we do for, it costs enough to do lunch anyway, it's an even greater loss, 'cause you're providing for everything. So, we're gonna continue to monitor that, and if guidelines change, or things change, or it makes sense, absolutely, but I just wanna kind of clarify that with everyone, just so they kind of understanding of what that program is. And then, as a district, we are monitoring that, and if there are situations in that case which makes sense, then one hundred percent, we would definitely, um, you know, participate in a program like that.
Is, um, are there any future board meeting considerations? Sorry, that's a minute.
Well, I think we just talked about one today, um, in our, in our previous session, is, um, the goal setting, this coming next meeting, you know, from there, um, and also two discussions of the, um, you know, further considerations and discussion about the communications, you know, efforts with the board and for the community.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Okay. Okay, we are to our action items, um, so we will be looking at the approval for the placement of the tentative draft fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget for public display. To get a motion to, um, approve placement of the tentative draft for twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
One second.
And get, okay, any discussion?
Yes, Frank is not here, Mr. Brenninger's not here today, so I'll do my best, I did not bring any pie or donuts, so I apologize for that, so, but, um, so, board, thank you for this time, so, again, this is the tentative budget, and this discussion here is just to provide the district kind of with an overview of kind of where we're at, what we're predicting, kind of what we wanna see, and then this is also then, um, an opportunity to have further conversations as we tweak and finalize the budgets, and then come back in September, so, just to keep that in mind there. Again, as we talked before, our mission statement and our guiding premises behind that, we, we ensure that each child is inspired and empowered to reach their full potential when we allocate resources in a purposeful, fiscal responsible manner, and that's what this presentation is for, to kind of discuss with that. Just a reminder of ca, of calendar, so May is the first draft, which we talked about in May, kind of a, this, basically the same presentation, there's a little bit more detail from there, and then now in July, this is when we are presented with the tentative draft budget, because then after this point, then we put it out for public, uh, display to seek any more feedback, we have further discussions, like we're talking about our goals, so, we're talking about some elements in that goals, well, that's, we need some financial commitment, so what are we talking about here? What does that look like, so we can really kind of tweak that to match the goals, and see what is, how does it impact our budget, so we can finalize that, come then in September, to then approve the budget with that too. And remember, the reason why we do a budget is that, because the state, if we wanna receive any state or federal funding, the district always needs a budget on file that is approved. So, just as an overview, we talked about our revenues, some of our revenues are classified as follows, we have our property taxes, we have our local fees, we have our state monies, our federal, and some other monies as well too, they're transferred from other funds, if we have that sometimes. We also have our expenditures, which are classified in different areas, different funds, we have our salaries, employee benefits, purchase services, supplies, you know, tuition, capital outlay, and we also have some opportunities for transfers too, when that happens, if we move some funds from one fund area to another, that's also classified as an expenditure. As we go into our budget, we always wanna discuss some CPI, remember, CPI has a major impact on our budget as a public school, because this is- Remember, CPI has a major impact on our budget as a public school, because this is our greatest revenue generator, because for us, majority of our revenues, over eighty percent or so, come from our local tax base. And every year, when we do our levy, our levy is based on CPI. And remember, it's based on the previous year's CPI in December. And so, as you can see here, CPI has been all over the place. And so for those two years here, we had CPI above five percent. And so we were able to levy for that, but then the last two years here, looking at here now coming next, previous year, last December twenty twenty-four, CPI was marked at three point four percent. And so, this, there's a decrease now in CPI, which means there's a decrease in any type of money that this can try and capture in that way. So that is something that we gotta take into account for that. And then if you look at it right now, where we're at, CPI is about two point nine percent. And remember, the, the goal for the program is to be around two percent or so, to kinda keep it down there. So, and you guys have probably heard about the talks with, you know, Jerome Powell and all this stuff, and inflation has an impact on us. Because CPI is an indicator we use, but also capable of fact, inflation is a factor there too, and inflation is still a little higher than CPI. So we're feeling some of those impacts too with that. Any questions on the CPI index where we're at? So based on that information, we're putting together a budget here, and with the CPI, we also take a look at our three, five, and ten-year average, because even though CPI may be about three point four percent, the averages here kinda give us a sense of the costs of things that are still happening. So really, when you're looking at it right now, we're looking at about a four to five percent, you know, increase in costs, you know, from about a year or two ago. So, that's, you know, from supplies to services to, you know, everything with that, that really has an impact too on our budget. So, even though we may be getting, you know, s- an increase, it may not be as much because of the cost of doing business as well. So let's talk about our revenues. So we're looking at our revenues here, you can see the different funds we're talking about here. Um, so, there are a few funds here that have, you're gonna see a decrease in revenue, which is operations and maintenance fund. We also have our security funds, sorry, I'm just pulling up my notes here with that. Um, we also have our, uh, social security and I M R F funds have a slight decrease in the revenues for that. And so we're talking about that for, um, with that, we're, the decrease in revenue for Fund fifty and fifty-one, which is the social security I M R F, this is to spend down the surplus on that, and if you remember, that was, um, recommended by our auditors a few years ago. We've been doing that to spend that down, because then it doesn't look like we have a lot in there, because we have in our other funds that we see those decreases in that too. Some of the things to look at here though, if you look at it overall, our total revenues is gonna be about an increase of about, of about a half a million dollars, about five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, we're anticipating. Now with that, couple things wanna pay, come, I wanna, you know, bring to your attention. Our levy was at five percent for the last two years, four point nine nine percent, but now it's gonna come in around two point nine percent moving forward. We're gonna anticipate about that, cause it says three point four, but maybe two point nine, we'll see. Interest on investments has been five percent, but now it's gone down, because interest rates are coming down. It's about four percent, so that's a, that's a decrease on that. Our federal funding was as high as ten percent, but now it's down to about a normal four percent, again, from asset monies, but also too, you're gonna see in this budget, what I just spoke of with Title Two, Title Three, and Title Four monies being, being taken out, that's also reflected in this as well too. So that's a little bit of a cut there with some of our funding. And then our state E B F funding, um, is a minimal increase, basically flat. So with that, so we don't even know if we're gonna get one percent increase or anything. The state's saying, pretty much no new monies are gonna come for E B F, E B F funding right now for the states. So that's kinda flat with that too. And then finally, the last few years, the state had errors in the C P P R T, which is the, uh, collection tax we have for the businesses all around, and the state made some errors in the last few years, and they inflated C P R T to about three hundred thousand dollars over the last couple of years, and now they're making a real huge correction. And now from about, you know, two hundred thousand dollars, it's back down to like seventy thousand dollars, back to normal. That's, the state's goofy with all of their, all of their calculations with that. In all there, you're gonna see, that's reflected in our difference here, and that right there. So that's where we're anticipating probably about a two point eight percent increase in there, so that five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars interest in revenues that we're anticipating. Any questions on revenues? We look at our sources, here's the donut that, you know, Mr. Brenninger's made, but again, eighty percent or so is property taxes. That's where you get most of our money from, that's where CPI comes in a big factor with that. We have our local, we have our local fees as well, our local monies that we get. State monies, stays about ten percent, ten point seven percent, it's not changing. And again, remember, if you remember last year, we were also moved into a category three for our school districts from a category two, which means basically, if there's any new monies, which there's not, you don't get much of it. Um, but I do anticipate, if not this year, or after this year, because of CPI going down, we'll probably back to a tier-two district with the state. But again, we'll see how that, you know, how that comes out, cause they have not released any of those, you know, those numbers yet with that. And then federal is about three point nine percent, and that does reflect, so down, you know, from about four percent, four and a half, because of the losses that we're anticipating from the Title Two, Three, and Four. Our expenditures, if we're looking at our budget here, so as you can see here, we have our expenditures, and the majority of our expenditures come from our education fund, which, you know, we are people business, and we employ a lot of people, and most of that comes from our salaries and for our benefits for our employees of the education fund. Um, and it's increasing by about four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and this is mostly due to the increase in salary. And also remember that about ten percent increase in insurance coverage as well. Something new this year to keep, pay attention is that, remember, we did a split of social security and I M R F, and for many years, again, this is all in one line. But the state and the auditors would like to see this become two separate line items, and this change was approved last year by the board, and last year, should I say, and now it's been fully implemented, so we've been working towards that. That's why you now see fifty and fifty-one separate. Or before, it was just one line item. Just so that it, there's no, cause I M R F, social security, they're all actually kinda put together, and I M R F is like, hey, listen, we need to have a little bit more clarity on this, because it's, the, the lines have bled too much, and so it just helps provide clarity for I M R F funds as well too. When you're looking at Fund Twenty, the operations and maintenance, this does include three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of the additional capital project for the mark delay project we have for the bathrooms that we had to do, and so a portion of that was paid from last year, but now for this year's remaining three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And after seeking, remember, we talked about, uh, with Twenty, with shifting some funds around with Fund Twenty. We did talk about that with, uh, Scott, with, our legal counsel spoke with Frank about that, and after discussing that, it does look like we were able to keep the capital funds in Fund Twenty without transferring them to Fund Sixty. The reason why we're not gonna try to benefit from that is that, is if we have those monies and we transfer them to Fund Sixty, we have to earmark those monies to be spent on a specific project, and we can't change that and have to do that. So, the suggestion is we don't have to move that, cause if we keep it in Fund Twenty, that provides us opportunity to use those monies for, you know, whatever project the board wants to utilize it on. Not necessarily, if we move it, then we have to say, okay, we're moving fifty thousand dollars for, you know, this project, and it has to be used on that project for Sixty. So I know that Frank talked about that last month with the board, kinda looking into that, but it doesn't seem like that's gonna be something that we, you know, suggest doing. What's, we can continue to talk about that as we get to the final budget, but it's better to keep it in, keep those monies in Fund Twenty, so that we have more flexibility to spend on projects as we see fit for the board as well. I just wanna stop there, cause does anybody have any questions about that? Cause we talked a little bit about it last month, and then now with this, we're deciding to keep it in Twenty, provides us more flexibility and not move it to Sixty, like was discussed last time. Does, any questions on that?
Flexibility makes sense.
It does, it really does, which I'm glad, because I was like, oh boy, which is really good, so, um, and then it also, then this'll, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, no question, but the little asterisk is missing on where it's still included.
Oh, I'm sorry, that isn't Fun, I'm sorry, I didn't see, that's, um, that isn't Fun Twenty.
Yeah, I know, but it's missing.
It's missing in the presentation? Oh, I see what you're saying. So we can go back and add that asterisk, so we can see that, okay. So, and remember too, with the district, we're gonna continue review, and actually, this is gonna be a part of our conversations when we get our long-term, our updated long-term facilities plan and our life safety reports, then that's gonna be critical to talk about, well, how do we spend our Fund Twenty monies, then what does that look like? How is this going to work through? Like, what are these projects we need to do and take care of with that too? But as you're gonna see here, the total increase is eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, we're anticipating at about nine hundred thousand dollars of expenditure increases.
I don't think you need to add the asterisk, onto act, are you saying onto actually, like, putting it on Twenty?
Yeah, isn't?
I think that little asterisk is just the, it's like the notation at the bottom. Right?
Yeah, but he doesn't mean to include it.
Yeah, he does, it's, yeah, it's, yeah. If you have an asterisk, you're kinda like, hey, the asterisk indicates, hey, when I look at that, yeah, yeah.
It says right there, in Fund Twenty.
But which se- which one? Twenty-five or twenty-six?
Yeah, so I think it's, I think, if it was just a little note, this, you know, this includes, I think, because the asterisk, just to put it in there, so you see. What does that asterisk mean? Oh, this is what the asterisk means, like that type of thing, I see what you're saying. So now we get to our bar charts here. As you can see, our expenditures by type, um, our salaries, which is the first column here, that is our highest in there. And also too, purchase services is higher there too, and remember, for salaries, we're certainly saying, for our purchase services, majority of that includes our co-op Ladsy. And so if we were to take those, those actually can't count towards salaries, then you'd see the percentages that match more the districts too, because a lot of salaries come out of our purchase salaries, but it's just through Ladsy, so it's technically a purchase service.
And we're gonna start seeing that go down, right? Because we're doing.
You know, thank you, Dan, it's a very good point, yeah, because, yes, and that's a good point, because as you can see here, especially these last two years here, we have been trying to take now, some of our provided services are speech pathologists over the last few years, cause you remember, forever, we've had every single speech pathologist from Ladsy, which is, which is good, but it's also more cost. And bring them more, bring them into the district, and so the, the goal is then, keep the same amount, but then utilize Ladsy to fill in those parts we can't. And so, yes, thank you, you're gonna see that, so it's, this is kinda gonna go, kinda go down. This is kinda gonna, kinda, also balances out, but actually maybe, you know, it'll bounce out pretty well, but yes, because in that way, then we have a more of a local salary instead of purchase services, which is beneficial. And actually, we have, what, three more starting this year, so it's gonna be a good team we have, and it's really developing. And also allows us to really have, um, you know, monitor and more say, like, how we service our students and set the schedules and everything too, cause Ladsy does a fantastic job, but you're also kinda at their mercy sometimes too, with how, you know, you schedule things and coordinate things too. It's, it's really, it's really been good these past few years with that. And when the intention then is to add, I, I apologize, can't often add two or three more, then moving forward from next year for a total of seven, and then the remaining, whatever we need to fill in, then we purchase those additional services from Ladsy to help with that.
Say seven, you mean seven general positions or seven speech paths?
Seven speech, speech paths, yes. A lot of preschool, no, preschool was a ton. We have a lot of, we have a lot of speech services in the district too. We also, some of our self-maintained classrooms as well too, so then, Ladsy speech services are provided with, we s- we always hover around like, it's gone down from like nine to about seven point like seven or something like that, so we'll, we'll fill in those points with Ladsy, instead of having everything from Ladsy with that. Yeah, it is a lot. Yeah, but you know, but a lot of our younger students, they come speech only, they have a lot of needs with that too, so it's, you know, and they do, you know, so we continue to provide that, those services to our students. Here's the other, the donut, look at everything, just to kinda, you know, look at it visually in a different way here. Um, any questions right now on the budget object items or where the monies are going? So, Mr. Brenninger wanted to kinda share, and I think it was a good idea too, like, we have this budget, but what does this budget provide us? Because it's a bunch of numbers. And just to put in perspective too, we have about a hundred and thirty-six certified staff, forty classified staff, or aides, bus drivers, you know, from there. We have about thirteen hundred students that we service, and we maintain three buildings with over two thousand square feet of learning space. So, this budget really helps the district covenant, services, provides a lot of services and employs a lot of people. So our initiatives this year that are incorporated in this, this budget, major initiatives, remember last month, Mr. Roberts came and presented about technology plan. So a big portion of that are purchases for new Chromebooks and new computers for teachers. Great Minds Math Program, we continue to use that program. It's about thirty thousand dollars or so each year maintaining that, because we can, you know, maintain for repurchase of supplies and resources with that. Uh, the Climate Culture Survey, that's, you know, that's, that's a cost there, two of eleven thousand dollars for that for this year and next year at least, we maintain that. Professional Developments, this year, we, this is about forty thousand dollars here. Um, this is then incorporating, this is taking into account the monies that are not gonna be covered from Title Two. So with that, we typically cover some, you know, personal, no matter, like, administrators go to administrative academies. We provide, you know, aides with training as well too. We do a lot with that locally anyway, but the, the, um, Title Two helps just kinda, you know, offset some of that, cause you can do it with Title Two, but we have to incorporate all of that now. So that's why you see a larger increase that we're gonna reflect that. Our STEM program there, three thousand, which typically comes from our Title Four. We're incorporating that as well there too. And then markedly new bathrooms, it was a tool of eight hundred thousand dollars for all of that, but remember, Fund Twenty incorporated three hundred and forty-five, three forty-five or three twenty-five, where's the asterisk at? Three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in line twenty to cover the remaining portions of that. So, just wanna kinda put it, you know, uh, just kinda in initiatives perspective, and honestly, the talk we were having earlier about communication and everything, that may be something we talk about, what are initiatives? As we come in August to finalize our goals, and let's tell this, that's a good idea, that, okay, well, what else? What other initiatives do we wanna see, and can we look into see how they impact the budget? Can we find the sources for that, to fund that as well too? So any questions on this? So in summary, we are looking at a slight deficit of about five hundred thousand dollars, but I wanna remind the board is that, remember, this tentative draft budget is always set up as a worst-case scenario, because the worst, uh, not the worst, but what we don't wanna do is say, hey, we have a balanced budget, and then start spending more, and then end up with a, you know, predicted, the predicted balance, but then we end up with a deficit. We wanna predict the worst-case scenario, and as we continue to, you know, sharpen our pencils and dot our i's, cross our t's and have conversations, we can really kinda find to that. And typically, then we do end up with a balance or surplus, but we just wanna anticipate any and all costs that we can right now to provide that picture. And that's why we send this now, so we can talk, tweak it further, you know, further, you know, revise it, so it's approval in September. And again, there's another asterisk there. Any questions on this? Part of the process when we're presenting our budget, we always wanna talk about our bond, and also to our fund balances, as you remember, our bond summary. Um, we have spent the bond, so we actually have, because that's where the cost for the mark delay, uh, water pipe, because if you remember, costs we did anticipate, the masonry work here at Lace, and then the work for the bathrooms, because they had to be redone, had to be made A compliant with all of that, additional costs of that. So we did spend our bond monies, but we are actually, we've had to go to our local funds to fund the rest of it, about three hundred so thousand dollars for that. And then we also wanna talk about our fund balances. So I gotta pull up my notes here for my fund balances here. So, the state, also remember, requires us to report about our fund balance, so we can share that, because it's always good practice to share what our fund balances are, so it's transparent, so we have that, and it's broken down by each of our funds here for this. But a better picture snapshot is this fund balance calculation. What this provides is that the state requires monitoring of the education, operations, maintenance, and transportation funds. So of those three, there's three major funds, we, you know, monitor more closely, but we report out on. And what this provides then is that kind of a general, whoa, sorry, kind of a general estimate of what, what do we have in those funds? And do we have any, you know, excess with that? And right now, as you can see in our education fund, we have about a seventy-seven percent, we have about seventy-seven percent in savings, if you wanna say that. And then in the other ones, we do have a little extra in operations and maintenance and Fund Twenty. And then we do have about eight percent in transportation. So when it's an average, we have about ninety-three percent in our funds, which. So when it's the average, we have about ninety-three percent in our funds, which means that if we run out of money, if there's something happen, we can keep our lights on for about a school year. Maybe, depending on what it is. Now, there are talks, we're going to start to talk more planning and, you know, operation, you know, some of the facility piece we want to do. Maybe spending down some of the fund money so we can kind of really strategically plan that. But at the same time, we don't want to be in a situation where we're spending down our fund balance. Because if we get down to a point where we're less than a certain percentage, then we're having to write, you know, anticipation bonds, taking out loans to pay our bills, basically putting everything on a credit card to pay in that, no either. So this is a, this is a healthy amount, but it's also a conversation to say, well, are there opportunities like in our Fund Twenty? Where can we spend some of that down or look and see how do we maybe spend some of that down to maybe take care of some of the additional projects we need to do as well? So, oh, man, sorry, this is really very wrong, that's better. Okay, yes. Absolutely, that's, thank you, any questions?
The unaudited fund balances.
Yes.
When, that doesn't include like early taxes, when do early taxes come in?
I think they, the early taxes came in, I want to see.
Don't they come in June?
They want to come in June. So really why it's unaudited is because we don't get the audit until, you know, later on. So this is just our best estimate for that. And what we have on hand, but it's not audited. So this is what we have on hand, but when it's audited, some of this may be reallocated to the previous year, all of that, too. So this is the best, what we have on hand, but it's not a hundred percent accurate. Because when we have the audit, they will then provide us the actual percentages. Because some of these monies may have been reallocated from last year based on the spending and all that, too. So then they'll come in and audit and let us know truly what we have on hand. So right now, this is what we have, but it's, it's not like, you know, it's not, it's just, it's just audited. So we just, we have it, but we're not sure if this is true reflection or if it's maybe seventy percent compared to seventy-seven percent or, you know, two ninety-two. So it's just a matter of just probably small percentages, but just saying unaudited because it's not truly audited to make sure it's exact. That's what that means with that. But I also think this is a good representation and it's a conversation the board should continue to have. Because fund balances, while they're important, we also want to make sure that we're being just responsible and also not, you know, saving, saving, saving and not, you know, having all this that, well, what do you mean you're having to have this? What are you doing with this? We got to make sure we're, you know, being intentional about the conversations and what that's going to mean. And honestly, we're going to have life safety report now, you know, that's coming up. Because that's every ten years, we're going to have that this year to talk about. There's going to be some stuff in there. There's going to be our long-term facilities plan, there's going to be stuff in there, too. And so, but you can see, yes, it says about three million, but that's nothing. That's like, that's nothing, you know? So what are we going to have to prioritize? Excuse me, and what are the things we want to do? And how does that look for us?
Any other questions?
All right, Myers, aye. Pavlu?
Aye.
Ramos?
Aye.
Severn?
Aye.
Wujara?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
Rinal?
Aye.
Okay, next, can we get a motion? That the board motion to inform Superintendent of the DuPage County Regional Office of Education that the hazardous conditions requiring the transportation of students, which was approved by the Illinois Department of Transportation, remain unchanged during the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So, go ahead.
Who's that?
Dana?
I'll take it.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is broken up into two elements, just kind of have it, but remember, if we want to receive transportation reimbursements, which we don't receive transportation reimbursements, but for specification, we do for some of that, too. But it's always good to have this on record because this also allows us to set our routes and know where the hazardous crossings are. So we provide these guidelines with that. This is just the board saying, hey, Superintendent, we're not changing anything, DuPage County, we'd like to maintain it. And we have to do that every year.
Cool, any further discussion?
All right, Pavlu?
Aye.
Ramos?
Aye.
Severn?
Aye.
Wujara?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
Rinal?
Aye.
Myers? Sorry.
Can I get a motion? That the board motion to adopt the resolution to retain approved status of hazardous walking conditions routes.
So moved, Wujara?
Thank you.
Second. So now, does this need to be read?
Yeah, we do read the resolution for that. And basically, what it's just saying is that as a board now, we are, our resolution is to recommend that we maintain this.
Do I need to read it out loud?
You need to read it out loud.
Okay. Under ordinary circumstances, the state will only.
No, I'm sorry, sorry, not that part, sorry.
Oh.
Below, the next page, sorry, the next page.
Oh, like I.
Whereas, whereas the board, you see it's page two?
Oh, yes, okay. Whereas the Board of Education of Darien Public Schools, District Sixty-One, DuPage County, Illinois, desires to retain approved status of hazardous routes so designated during the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Darien Public Schools, District Sixty-One, DuPage County, Illinois, that said previously approved conditions for.
I only get to read all the addresses.
Okay.
But you have to read the rest, for the following addresses.
For the following addresses. And then Darien Public School, District Sixty-One, requests free transportation for the identified population of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Resolution having been read by the Board Secretary, regular meeting of the Darien Public Schools, District Sixty-One Board of Education held July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, was adopted this twenty-second day of July twenty twenty-five by roll call vote of yea and nay, two of it. Any further discussion?
Who motioned? Who was that?
Katie, and then Allison.
It's a roll call vote, yeah. Ramos?
Aye.
Severn?
Aye.
Wujara?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
Rinal?
Aye.
Myers, aye. Pavlu?
Aye.
Thank you, board.
All right. Bless you.
Bless you.
Okay, I get a motion. It is recommended that the Board of Education motion to approve the suggested policy revisions. I will some.
Second.
And discussion.
So I don't know if you had a chance to review what's, you know, kind of the policy that the committee was. Thank you again, Policy Committee, for the time, it was good. I did hear back from the, the legal counsel, but it wasn't until this afternoon. So I wasn't able to kind of, you know, provide that. So we can, I can share that with the board so we could, we could talk about that in the second reading for any revisions of that, that may be. But if I want to come back here and just pull up my notes here for.
For the seven two five zero was what I sent.
Yes, so.
I have to abide by that, too.
Yeah, so there's a couple that I want to kind of pay attention to with this. So the first is, is that seven two five five, students who are parents, expected parents or victims of domestic or sexual violence. This policy is new and is being recommended to be adopted because it has the district continue to be, you know, it's part of statutes. And so we have to adopt that, so this policy has been recommended to be adopted as a new policy with that. There are other three, the other three policies that just want to call attention to. Before I get to that, though, just as a reminder, board, over the past few years, because remember, we utilize press as our policy suggestion. We're trying to get as close to press as possible. For the most part, our language is press, but there's always a couple tweaks where we maybe want to keep something that pertains to Darien and the language. But for the most part, all of these were pretty much just go with press. A great example of that is the changes in Title Nine. Remember, last year, we had adopted language to reflect the changes in Title Nine, all these different changes in twenty twenty-four, all the language changed. They became those recommendations, there's no way we would be able to do that. Well, now, it got changed back again for Title Nine. So all, most of these policies are reflecting those changes in Title Nine again, which press helps keep, you know, keep us appraised of. So the first one in a Policy Committee, please chime in, so please, please feel free, is two two sixty, which in this, with here, in two two sixty, which is uniform grievance procedure. The first paragraph from the page uses the word guaranteed. And so the, and so in the footnotes for press, it says, if you utilize the wording of guaranteed, does this put the district at more risk? This has broadened the policy too much. And so we asked for Legal Counsel to seek on that, too. So just, again, I, you know, I didn't get a chance to go through all of that, but I'll share that with the board with that. So I think right now, the suggestion is to keep the language as it is with that. And then I can provide the feedback to the board, so we come back to discuss it in the second reading. We'll have more clarification and make any tweaks with that than there, too. Seven two fifty, which is school admissions and student transfers to and from non-school districts. On the second page of the policy, actually, item four states, school counseling services. The Superintendent of the District shall annually inform all school personnel and students twelve years of age or older in writing of the availability of counseling with parent or guardian, without parent and guardian consent under four, under this state statute. So Dana, you made, you were saying something, too. So what did you share? Because you shared some good feedback on that from your perspective.
So according to state statute, every, anybody, the age of consent for counseling is twelve and over. So any twelve-year-old can, or over, can receive eight, up to eight counseling sessions, ninety-minute sessions. Why they say ninety minutes? Because ninety minutes is only an intake, maybe, is ninety minutes, they're usually sixty minutes. But eight ninety-minute sessions without parental consent after eight sessions. That is when you're required to then, if the child wants to continue, you must get parental consent.
So.
So.
And that was just part of the hesitation, kind of, it's like, you know, it says it in the state law, but then do we, you know, do we want parents to know? But the state law says they, you know, you really don't have to let them know type of thing. So it's just a matter of just.
For eight sessions.
For eight sessions, correct, so, yeah.
That is a lot, it's gone up every couple of years.
Ninety-minute sessions.
When I first started, it was four sessions. Twenty-five years ago, it was four sessions. So now, they've doubled it and they've doubled the time, well, they went up from sixty minutes to now ninety minutes. And no sessions are ninety minutes. And thinking their guess, their thinking was a ninety-minute session would be if someone is in crisis, right? If someone is suicidal.
That's a fair point, yeah.
If they are, there's domestic, there's abuse at home, because that's the only way a session really goes that long.
Yeah.
So it would be to provide that crisis intervention. If you have a good counselor, they're working towards, we need to start talking to your parents, we need to get you more services, we need, right? So that would be the process.
And that, that's a good perspective to have, it makes sense, you know, when you put it that way. Because honestly, I was like, wait a minute, I want parents to know what's happening. But at the same time, there are going to be situations like crisis situation that, too, where it's not feasible. Or it may not be right because maybe the crisis situation is because of something that's happened at home or this, that, too. So, yeah, and that's, that's where that was coming from.
And that's not to say that after the first session, like I teach my clinicians, after the first session, if a client comes in and they're underage and we don't have consent, at each session, you're saying, when can we get parental consent? Like, you're working with the client to ensure that they feel comfortable telling the parent. You have until eight, that's how I kind of think about it, you have up until eight sessions until you have to let them know. But after the first session, with a twelve-year-old, you're saying, I get what's going on, can we just start talking to your parents together?
Yeah. Yeah. Twelve-year-old is still young to me.
It is, it's the age of consent for treatment in Illinois. Other states are different, but.
That's, and that's the reason why I'm like, twelve, I remember me as twelve-year-old, man. I don't know. So, but I appreciate that, that's, that's a good perspective to have, so thank you for that, because it makes sense, I know where that's coming from. But that's why we just had that to kind of ask, so again, once I get that feedback, I'll.
And yeah, my question would be, if that's the law that mandates us to do that, would we even, could we even challenge that and not do it? Because then someone's license is on the line.
And that's, and that was the question, is it even, can we even not do that, too? So I don't, I don't think we can because of that, so it's just a matter of just asking that question, just for clarification. That, that's a good, that's a good explanation to have with that. Thank you for that. And then seven two seventy, which, looking at that one is, sorry, they pulled the thing here, administering medicines to students. So with this one, on page of seven, you have the policy, it speaks of medical cannabis and allowing forms of it to be at school. But as press always shares, footnotes provide a little bit more, you know, context to this. And the footnote for this states that we should consult with the attorney on this language and section because we don't know if it's something we can do, should or should do, should I say, what is that, what situation has put us in? Do we have to describe what it is? So it's just clarification on that and recommendations for the policy, just so we're making sure that we have strong policy and it's keeping the district in, you know, good position with that, too. Travis, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay, it looked like you were going to ask a question with that. So like I said, I'm sorry, I didn't get feedback yet. Actually, I say, I just got it like right before the board meeting, just got back. So I'm not able to kind of show, but what I'll do is, then, board, is I will share that feedback with everyone to take a look at. Because remember, this is just approval of the first readings, the recommendation is still to approve these. But then, this is our time now, based on feedback, to go back, tweak it or keep it and provide that context. And then from there, we can approve, we can discuss it one more time at the next board meeting before approval. So, Policy Committee, did I miss anything? Did you miss anything from policy or anything?
No.
All right, okay. And that's, I sort of got with that. All right. Severn?
Aye.
Wujara?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
Rinal?
Aye.
Myers, aye. Pavlu?
Aye.
Ramos?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, then. Now, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Anthony? Second. Gabby? It is eight oh five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
We don't get credit for it being an hour, because we've been here for eighteen hours.
Never since four thirty. I know, I know, so.
But it was an hour. It's not bad.